Selectmen meeting of Monday, November 14th of 2022 to order. All members of this board are present with the exception of Selectman Misselli, who is away on a personal commitment. We did meet an executive session. We are running about five minutes behind. We do apologize. We met an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI Local 1703, Unit 1, which is our custodians in building maintenance, and the New England Police Benevolent Association, which is Local 1 for our police patrolmen. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. We did adjourn that executive session for which we shall not return. And at this time, I kindly ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is the transmitting of Treasury warrants, 202317, 202317 Wires 17A, 202318, 202318 Wires 18A, 202319, 202319 Wires and 19A. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion been made. Do I have a second discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Moving on to our next, we don't have any minutes to approve. Our first appointment is with Nicole Rosillo of CNC Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Rocco's Restaurant regarding a request to change the manager of the all alcohol license of CNC Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Rocco's Restaurant for property located at 193 Main Street from Joseph Sacchira to Nicole A. Rosillo. Good evening. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. So we, just to give you some perspective here, we do have a full application. I'm going to turn it over to the manager to take us through that and then give you an opportunity to speak if you have anything that you want to share with us.
Madam Chair, this is a, as you noted, a request for a change in manager. It's actually a relatively straightforward process. There is a requirement with the ABCC that the Board of Selectmen consider this matter and decide whether or not to authorize the change. I would note that it has been reviewed by Police Chief Joseph Desmond, and he notes upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval for the change in manager of CNC Restaurant Group LLC, DBA Rocco's Restaurant from Joseph Cattirelli to Nicole Rosilio.
Okay. Any questions or comments from anyone on the board? Anything? Nicole, do you have anything that you want to add? Pretty straightforward. Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to grant this request as presented. Motion been made. I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. We'll sign that and get this to you. Okay? Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to our next appointment, which is with Hannah McKinnon of Ster Nutrition regarding a request to obtain a common victular license for the property located at 2 Lowell Street, Unit 6B in Wilmington. Hi there. Have a seat. Thank you. And once she gets settled, no rush, if you can just identify both of your names for the record, that would be appreciated.
Hi, I'm Hannah McKinnon.
Nice to meet you.
Daniel Greenhutch.
Hi, how are you? Nice to meet you. Okay. So again, we have a comprehensive package here that's provided. I will kindly ask the manager to take us through that.
Yes, this request is, again, relatively straightforward. It's a common victular request. There was a change in business established over at 2 Lowell Street. The recommendations from both the health director and the building inspector are for approval.
Any questions or comments from any member of the board?
Good luck.
Good luck. So I'm going to end up calling for the vote, and then before I dismiss you for the night, I wanted to give you a few moments after to talk a little bit about your business because I'm unaware of the business, and I'm sure many people listening are as well. So this would be an opportunity for you to convey a public message if you so choose. So at this time, I entertain a motion to grant the request as presented.
Move to grant the request.
Motion's been made by Selectman Bendel, second by Mr. DePalmer. All those in favor? Any discussion? I apologize. Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. So it has been granted. We'll get you the paperwork, but if you can just share with this board and with the public that's here and also listening at home, a little bit about your business.
Yeah, so we're just a local healthy hangout spot where we offer protein meal replacement shakes, protein coffees, protein snacks, all of those things where we can just get into the community, make an impact, help people any way we can, a place for people to come, do homework, work from home, have a nice drink, and just really hang out and be a part of the community. We're already working with local businesses right in the Plaza, doing raffles. We'll be attending the Rotary Meeting at Tremesos Wednesday morning, things of that nature. Really just diving into the community, helping people, and yeah, providing healthy meal replacement shakes, all the things.
Wonderful. So just to add to that, just for people that are listening, so 2 Lowell Street, Unit 6B, is in the Square One Plaza, correct? Which is across from the Shell Station.
Correct.
You're in where Tremesos is and some others. So who are your neighbors in the Plaza so they know exactly where to find you?
Josie's Bakery.
Okay, so you're next to them. Okay.
Yep, you got it. Edward Jones Insurance Agency.
Fit Body.
Fit Body.
Okay, so you're right in that area.
Yes.
Okay, so easy to find. You're right over in the corner. Okay. Perfect. Well, thank you for that. We wish you the best of luck, and your request has been granted and the manager. And Bev will be working with you to get that paperwork.
Thank you.
Okay? Have a great night. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we have made up some time, which is great. So our next appointment is with Paul Cardello with iPods for Wounded Veterans regarding a donation from Bose. Good evening, Mr. Cardello. You are no stranger to this board. We're thrilled to have you back, so feel free to join us at the table if you so desire, or if you prefer to stand, that's fine as well.
I have two artificial hips, so I need Kevin's chair next to him. I make a rearrangement. I need a hard chair over here, Kevin.
Want this one?
Yeah, that blue one. I want to get up.
Okay.
Once I sit down.
Just so you know, when you sit in that, it rocks back, so don't go...
No, these ones.
Oh, they don't?
That hard chair. Thanks, Kevin.
No problem. May I want to...
Yeah? Well, I guess I don't have to introduce myself to this board because everybody knows me. I want to thank everybody in the town and everybody else that's been associated with us for the last almost 11 years. Okay. Fortunately, I got to get this all out of here and... Can everybody hear me, I hope?
Yes.
All right. No, that's my water. Keep that over there. Well, about 13 days ago, I contacted a Tom manager, Jeffrey Howe, and I told him I got a call from the Bose Corporation, United States Army Lieutenant Colonel Ed Collazo, who was formerly leaving Bose Corporation. And he said, you know, we've done great things in the last 10 and a half years. We've serviced over 4,000 injured servicemen and women in the United States of America, and it's like mind-boggling to all of us that we've gone. We started little, and we're national, and we've done national events in Florida, Arizona, Tucson, Phoenix, Virginia. And he said, well, let's go with a final bang. We've had a relationship with them for 10 years, and our sponsorship is ending. Bose is getting out of military home business. And he says, well, what do you, you know, what should we do? And then we got contacted by the state. One thing led to another. We're in charge, we had an electronic distributor for the injured servicemen and women for the state of Massachusetts, and they said we'd done them one year. It's a two-year project. It's, the injuries are horrendous, and there's a lot. So that's how it started, and then we contacted, he says, well, you started in Wilmington, Billerica, what are we going to do? I says, well, I talked to, I went down to the police department because I had to get a new safety chair for my granddaughter. And he says, oh, yeah, we have a lot of veterans here. I says, whoa, let me call Bose. Let me see if we can do a fire department, a safety unit, and the police department. Get them all one together, it'd be great, you know, because they've been supporters of us and, you know. So that's what happened. I asked them, well, what do you, you know, what do you think? You know, I don't want to do anything without your authorization. And I says, you call the shots. He goes, no, they serve our country, they're getting their headphones, and they're getting their earbuds from Bose Corporation. So first off, I personally want to thank Ed Collazo for sponsorship. If you go over fundraising to get a 10-year sponsorship, it's amazing. Usually there's a travel limit of five years. We put on extension for another five years. And he says, no, I want Billerica, Wilmington, Police and Fire Department, and first responders to get headphones and earbuds. So all I can say is congratulations to all the servicemembers that belong to the Fight Department and first responders in Police Department. We also have a member of the Massachusetts National Guard, and they told him he was eligible. But one quick thing I want to tell the people of Wilmington. Our veteran agent, Lou Samaya, had a total knee replacement, and he is in recovery. And we have postponed the Wilmington event, which you should have had in October, till we, April 1st or April 8th of next year, till he's fully recovered. We did not want to do the event without him there, so for the people of Wilmington. And we had this event, there were front-page news and time required, so we couldn't do Louisville, so we went to Tewksbury and took care of 38 veterans there. And we're going to do it for Wilmington. To my left is media relations and jack-of-all-trades, Airport App, as you know her from other projects and...
Yes, absolutely.
Well, let's mention the Wilmington Senior Center. She has a knitting group that makes scarves, hats, and blankets for our veterans. And one thing led to another, we contacted Billerica. We have Billerica making our scarves and hats and blankets. And we have hats for veterans out of Kingston, New Hampshire, has made 80 hats for veterans in Andover. A big Andover event, Andover Stoner Event this Saturday up in Andover. We have 80 veterans going to attend that event. So I just want to thank Gail. We should mention Rob and Marlon Thetos. Gail, you don't have a bracelet on you, do you?
No, we don't.
Nope. They make red, white, and blue bracelets, and they give out to all the veterans, and they have sayings on them. They honor veterans and stuff like that. And so we went to Tewksbury, you know, as crazy as it sounds, you know, it's Wilmington, Tewksbury, and Billerica. We haven't been to Tewksbury in 10 years and 10 months, okay? We finally put it together and went there. But we got a donation from the Wilmington-Tewksbury Elks, led by Gail and Ray Metcalf, and we got a grant. And they were able to give Tewksbury veterans 43-inch high-definition television with two-year warranty, Levano brand-new laptop, Asus brand-new laptop. So the same donation will go to the Wilmington veterans in April. So I just want to thank everybody in the Board of Directors at the Wilmington Elks and for their donation. And also, I want to thank, personally want to thank Kevin Kyra and the Wilmington Sons of Liberty, who's been a major sponsor for us. Kevin's group bought 38 military baseball hats with all the insignias of the armed services. And each veteran in Tewksbury got a military baseball hat, and Kevin spoke to the group. I'm sure he's going to talk about that. But Kevin's gone to Brockton, to the homeless home, and Medfetons here, and he's gone to Tewksbury. He really knows what's going on. And also his sister, Michelle Kyra. People don't know this, at Avani Care on 90 West Street in Wilmington, there's a special unit of 14 veterans in wheelchairs. She went out and bought them all clock radios out of her personal account, and we really want to acknowledge her for doing that. So one thing leads to another, you know, we get involved in things, it's like a snowball. So I'm just going to read these off. We've had 15 events. Brockton, Falmouth, Marshfield, Quincy, Mansfield, Gardner, back to Brockton, 104, 113 at Brockton, Salem, Tewksbury, Andover, Stonem, Salt Boston in December, Lexington December 10th, and Avani Care December 13th. We end up in Lubin on the 17th, Lubin-Burlington. We have 80 veterans here. And then we end up in Billerica on Tuesday from 12:00 to 2:00. It's supposed to be 150 people there and about 100 veterans. On the 13th of December in Wilmington, we're at Avani Care. We're going to see the 14 veterans. We have Board of Directors, John Parker, well, he dresses up as the veteran Santa Claus. And top volunteer, Don Martell, was a teacher at Wilmington High School, just retired, established the local Heroes Club. She's going to dress up as Mrs. Claus, and she found a sponsor to donate 14 toiletry bags for Christmas. And we're going to give them out to veterans. Yeah, we're also going to have, we have students from Austin Prep and Wilmington High School. I think we're going to have two students from Austin and two students from Wilmington High School that is going to give help with the veterans and meet all the veterans in the wheelchairs. I don't think people realize that we had a veteran unit in there, and nobody, you know, we go, our warehouse is like a quarter of a mile away. We never knew about it until Michelle called us like three months ago, you know? So it's, we've been there twice, and it's, you know, it's really been fabulous there, but they don't get to see nobody. Nobody realizes, no, that they're there. We're like the first ones that have had a function for them. We eat them out, knitted hats and blankets, Senior Center made them blankets and all kinds of stuff like that. So that's what we've been doing, but I just think that, you know, we started on the idea where you had no one to run the 501(c)(3). Get it backwards, went national instead of doing the state of Massachusetts, which the normal people do. And now we're doing the state of Massachusetts. It's probably going to be a two- to three-year project.
Well, I think people appreciate just the labor of love that you're doing, and I think people understands, understand how you've come full circle. You've done things local and beyond, and I'm sure everyone that you've come in contact is forever grateful. So what do you have in your little magic bag there?
Well, I want to show everybody, so we don't want everybody to say, oh, I didn't get this and I get that. This is what every veteran is going to see. This is from St. Thomas Schoolchildren. They have a letter thanking veterans. This is from Bose Corporation.
Can we take these out of the packages?
No, no.
Can you take them up there?
This is the headphones, and this is our brochure.
Do you want me to take them up there?
Yeah, they can show the veterans in here.
The pins, leave the pins.
Yeah.
So behind you, I believe you have several offices in...
We have somebody from the representative of the police body.
Yes.
And you're going to get the official brand-new iPod water bottles that just came in.
So you have your police and fire chief behind you if you need assistance.
Yeah, I want to recognize them, and we'll call them up. Let me get this final piece of information.
Thank you. This is wonderful. That's great. That's great. So for people that are watching at home, there are cards that were made from children for the veterans, and then we're seeing a sample of the earbuds and the headphones.
We can't take them out of the car.
Sure.
Very nice. So we have Wilmington High School students that write letters to the veterans. They're part of the Dear Soldier letter honor program. I want to read this. Bear with me. It's a long letter, but it's one of our outstanding letters from a Wilmington High School student. Dear soldier, I hope you are doing well. Thank you for protecting and serving our nation. We now have hopes and dreams because of you. Your fearless sacrifice and hard work make me and others look up to you. I hope you keep your head high and pursue the rest of your dreams. Every single soldier who has dedicated their lives for the people of our nation is a true hero in my heart. Thank you again. Thank everything you've done to make our nation safe and at home. I personally would never know how you felt when you sacrificed everything just to protect our nation, but I would like you to know that your heroic actions are being acknowledged by me and my peers. Soldiers like you will always hold a special part in my heart and head. I would like to also let you know I appreciate everything you have done and hope that there will be more people like you who are selfless and put their nation first as a priority. Lastly, I hope you and other fellow soldiers get your hopes and dreams to become a reality. Make sure to care for you and your own well-being, and I hope everyone stays healthy, happy, kind, and respectful. Thank you for your service, and may God bless you and your loved ones. She will put a heart on it. Sincerely, Jasleen Royal, Wilmington High School.
That's beautifully written. Very nicely done. Okay. Go, go.
So, you know, we couldn't have done it without the people of Wilmington. We had an idea, you know, Ben Storm, Bond Storm, and we talked to everybody, you know? And, you know, everybody says, what are you going to do in retirement? You know, what are we, I'm going to travel, I'm going to do this and this. Not my wildest dreams would I ever be, think I'd be a national public speaker about veterans' affairs. That was not on my agenda. Everybody thinks I went to college and all this other stuff. I says, look, I'm from the old school. I went in the Air Force, on the job training from there on, you know, and then I went in the trucking. But all the people that work for iPods have passion about this. You don't, you don't work for iPods unless you have a passion. If you want to help a person that's struggling, then you come to iPods, and you see that they need help. And I'm just grateful for all the people who've donated, you know, from Wilmington to Billerica and everybody nationally and stuff. And hopefully we can make this event really great. We get Wilmington, Tewksbury Business Computer about for Wilmington, and we can have a great time and hope we lose healthy, get healthy by that time, and, you know, we can have a great event.
He's doing well. It's a good testament to you that you have the police chief and the fire chief both here.
Yeah, so can I have them, I can't see them, and I can't...
Yep, they're right behind you.
Could they come up here beside me, both of them, so I can recognize them? You know, I'm sorry, I'm old. Too bad they're B-75. Thank you.
Good evening.
Paul Cardello.
How would you describe the class?
Paul Cardello. I really, just from the bone of my heart, I personally want to thank you guys and what you represent. And, you know, I'm spokesperson for a lot of people here, and I just want to read the Board of Directors to you. Wayne Fox, co-chairman, his father was a World War II pilot. John Parker, Vietnam Liaison Officer, Vietnam. Major Ballard, Joe Savanti, Kingston's Liaison Officer, two tours in Vietnam. Ari Hall, a board member. Cameron Clark, fundraising and public relations, physical therapist. Cindy Ward, Administration of Social Media. Kathleen McKenna, Dear Soldier Director and Treasurer. These people, they're the ones that drove me. They're like my clutch. They said, we, every time they went to Walter Reed, they said, we're not doing enough. All I can say is these people right here, they went to Walter Reed 16 times out of 23. What Board of Directors have ever done that? You know? So we've grown from a little big thing to we're a national organization, but we're coming on to the state of Massachusetts, and we're trying to recognize everybody. And like I say, I'm really grateful for Ed Collazo for doing this for Wilmington, you know, public safety and the Police Department, the Fire Department, and recognizing we have more. Jeff, one person with the Massachusetts National Guard, I believe you said?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah. So we're going to take care of everybody. All right, this is what I have. Our packers are coming in next Monday. We want to see if we can come down to this Public Safety Building on Tuesday, the 22nd, and deliver all the goods. Will you make some time, some arrangements for that?
Absolutely.
So if it's okay with you, Mr. Cardello, a lot of the servicemen and women are here tonight from the Police and Fire Department, and I would kindly ask if the respective chiefs could acknowledge the members of your department so they can be publicly recognized, and please ask them to stand since they took the time out of their busy schedules to be here tonight. We'd like to publicly recognize them, please. Thank you.
I would like to introduce Sergeant Nick Knopftel. Officer Mike Johnson. And Officer Megan Susan.
A few from the Fire Department about Lieutenant Ryan Quigley. Lieutenant Brooke Green. Firefighter Michael Genetti. Firefighter Jason Kennedy. Former Wilmington Lowell Police Officer, current Wilmington firefighter, Walter.
Maybe we can all rise and give them a standing. So we do recognize that we don't, we don't have the goods for you here tonight, but we wanted to publicly recognize you, and we appreciate that you made the effort to come down here as well as our respective chiefs. All that you do as first responders for us, we appreciate in the town and the fact that you've served your country with such admiration. Certainly, we just came off of Veterans Day, and I know many of you were there in attendance as well. What you do each and every day is very much appreciated, and we wanted to take this opportunity as a board to highlight your achievements as servicemen and women for our country, and we just wanted to say thank you. So hopefully, you're looking forward to when the goods are in hand next week. Certainly, we appreciate Bose Corporation donating that to you, Mr. Cardello, to extend to the town of Wilmington. We appreciate both of you being here. Mrs. Proto Papas, you're a household name in town and are always volunteering for families, veterans, seniors, you name it, you're always a part of it. You help with our elections. Your volunteerism, you know, is unmatched. So thank you to you both. If you have any closing comments either one of you would like to say, Chief Desmond and Kavanaugh, thank you very much for being here, and thank you once again, men and women, for being here as well.
All right, so we'll be down there Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Let us know what time. You can email.
Okay.
We'll get, yeah, we'll get ahold of you, and we'll set it up.
Now, before we close, does any board member want to give any sort of comments or anything? Just to...
Thank you very much. Just want to thank you all for being here and thank you for the presentation. Appreciate all the work that you do and your group does, and obviously can't think of a better group to honor next week, and so thank you for giving us that gift, and we're just so grateful to have so many fine men and women that protect us every day and have served our country. So to all of you, we really appreciate your great, great... Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to echo the comments from our chairman and Mr. Bendel, and I'm sure Mr. DePalma will have some nice words as well. You can't say no to Paul Cardello when he asks you to help, right? He has a great team of volunteers, and it is rewarding when you go to these events. I had the opportunity, as he said, to go to Brockton and to Tewksbury, and you get a chance to sit down and talk with some of the veterans of World War II veteran and Korean and Vietnam vets. It is quite amazing when you sit down and have a discussion with their history and what they've been through. And I certainly cannot thank you enough for what you do, what your iPods does and uplifts the veterans who sometimes are in a difficult place. So thank you for what you do. And to the veterans in the audience, thank you for your service. It's because of you we're able to do what we do here on Beh... It's because of you we're able to do what we do here on behalf of the community, so we cannot thank you enough for, for your service. Thank you.
Start off, Paul. Been involved in a few of your get-togethers.
Yeah.
And they're always so well-done. And see the vets there, smiles on their faces, receiving gifts. Why? Because they're a vet. No other. And as long as we as a country can thank our veterans, we're better off for it. And when I look around and I see all the veterans sitting here tonight in, in my normal everyday life, there's nothing else you can do except be proud. And as long as the kids know, our young people coming up, that this is who we should be thanking, these are our heroes, we'll be better off for it. And Paul, thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, do you have anything that you want to close with?
Pretty much all been said, certainly, Paul, it's clear that you're passionate about this, that really, you know, your history in, in support of veterans is clearly on display, and also to all of our members of the public safety, police, fire, we have a person in dispatch as well. Thank all of you for your service, both to this community, but then also to our country, so much appreciated.
And with that, I would just say thank you very much, and we really appreciate you being here, so thank you.
Okay, Julie, I saw Greg Sunday, his son's at Elmira College, he's 6'4 1/2. So I'm getting to be a PWE in this film, and I'm telling you that.
I'll tell you, there definitely, no, no shortage of height, so thank you again, I appreciate it, and wish you a good night.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks. I mean, you helped me, you helped get up. No, I think I can get up.
We'll see what happens.
Thank you. That was great. I'm good. All right, we'll see you Tuesdays.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, appreciate you coming. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. Thanks, very much. Thank you. Jeff, thanks.
Yes.
All right, all right, Kevin.
Sorry.
Here, take your, take your glasses, no, take your glasses, I'll put this in here.
Okay, thank you. Just going to pause for a brief moment, just so we can give time to transition the room. Okay, at this time, I'd like to move on to our next appointment, which is with Joseph Desmond, our police chief, as well as Daniel Ferbush, who is our traffic officer for the Wilmington Police Department regarding the 2022 Santa Parade. Good evening, gentlemen, thank you for being here, and thank you for your patience as we waited for your appointment to come up. Thank you. So I'll turn it over to you, chief, and then you can integrate Officer Ferbush as you deem appropriate.
Absolutely, so believe it or not, this will be our seventh parade this year. It seems to grow larger every year, and certainly we spearhead this, but the fire department, the DPW, the private sector, ANS Towing, there are a lot of people behind the scenes that make this work every year, and because of that, and because of the popularity, we were thinking this year with your blessing to maybe tweak it a little bit and maybe, you know, include part of the parade on two separate days. Obviously, it gets very, it gets very dark early this time of year, and sometimes the parade itself, just, we like to hit as many neighborhoods as we can. So we are going to make some adjustments, which I will have Officer Ferbush explain, and then we'll obviously take any questions if you have them.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So like the chief said, we are looking at some changes. Now that COVID, I won't say it's gone, but it's.
Better.
Gone down a little bit, and we've had a lot of people with vaccines and stuff like that. Things are starting to open up. We wanted this year to take advantage of that, so this year we're looking at actually bringing the stops back. In years past, we had stops where kids could actually come and visit Mr. and Mrs. Claus, they can take photos, they can take photos with their friends and stuff like that, and it was a good opportunity for them to actually come out and see Santa. Due to COVID, we stopped that because obviously, you know, we wanted to promote social distancing, we wanted to not have this atmosphere where we would bring people together where it could risk spreading potential COVID or whatever else was out there. So now that things are settling down, we're actually looking at doing stops again this year. One of the things that we had trouble with in years past was we always set certain times aside for these stops, and you always get these parents that would show up five minutes before we're leaving, and we're not going to turn anyone down. And what usually happened, though, was, you know, we get a couple of parents that show up late, we end up having them allow their kids to visit Santa, and now the parade gets delayed, and once, once you start a delay at nine o'clock in the morning, it just trickles down all the way down. So one of the things we're looking to do this year, obviously, as the chief said with your blessing, is we're actually looking at starting, we're doing Saturday and Sunday. Saturday would be two stops, two stops only. It wouldn't be like the traditional parade. We would do the elementary school, the Shawshin Elementary School at 11:00, and then we would do the North Intermediate at 1:00 PM. We would offer 45 minutes at each stop, and this will allow parents to bring their kids, if they so desire, to each school, and we'll have an opportunity for them to take pictures with Mr. and Mrs. Claus, and so on and so forth. This year, we will again be collecting toys for the Wilmington Fire Department's program, the Toys for Wilmington Children, food for the Wilmington Food Pantry, and obviously to help blow out, we're also collecting letters for the troops. I will say because of COVID and not having the stops, that was a little diminished because obviously we used to provide a writing table for kids to do that, but we'll obviously be bringing that back. So Saturday, that will be what we are doing, is just the stops. Sunday is the parade. Now, we've actually, because we're now offering stops again, we will be kind of shortening the parade route this year. We extended it the last two years because to, because we didn't have stops, and we wanted everyone to come out and still see Santa, so we actually extended it out, and it was going nine to 10 hours, and I never got any complaints from the volunteers, but it was just a real long day. And it was something we wanted to do because we felt it was important where they couldn't come to see Santa, so we bring Santa to them. Now that Santa will be, will be having the stops, obviously, we're going to be shortening it down because it was just a long day for volunteers, it was cold, it was getting dark, so we will be cutting it back to approximately six hours, but it should be able to hit every na, like every area in town. Also, I have to mention on the third, and I know people watching this from home, we are starting something new this year. We, on the third, we will be visiting five families of, of kids who either have mental handicaps or physical handicaps, that they cannot come out and see Santa Claus. So on our Facebook page, which is where we'll have the schedule, everything posted, we actually have, on one of the posts, we do have a link that goes to a form that we ask parents if they, if they, if their child fits that criteria, if they fill it out, someone will be in contact here from the event to speak with the parent. And what we'll do is we're offering 10 minutes for Santa and Mrs. Claus to go to the house. We won't go into the house, like I said, because obviously we still want to promote social distancing to a, to a point where we don't want to bring people into other people's homes, but like, we'll, we'll go to the driveway, we'll offer 10 minutes for the, the child to come out, still see Santa Claus, still take photos. We also offer, with the assistance of one of our police clerks, Don Nammo, we also offer that if these parents so desire, they can drop off a gift and Santa Claus can bring the gift to the child. It was kind of our way of kind of adding on to the Christmas spirit, but it also given opportunity for kids that can't come out and see us, and may not be able to go out roadside and see it, especially if it's a neighborhood where we just won't have access, that we will actually bring essentially the parade to them. Saturday, we're not expecting the parade to be as big as Sunday, because Sunday's the big day, but we'll still have a couple of trucks and stuff just to escort Santa to the two stops and to any of these homes that, you know, Wilmington kids that can't come out and see us, so that's pretty much the lineup for.
Right, we think it offers the best opportunity for parents and kids to not be left out in any way.
Yeah, and by having the stops on a separate day, it will eliminate, and especially with the gap, it will eliminate the chance of us being behind on the parade day. I always, we always try to keep the parade within time, but we also have to realize that there's traffic, there's trains, there's lots of different things, you know, if we go into a neighborhood and people, I gotta, I, every year I'm shocked by the amount of generosity that this town does, and you will go into a neighborhood where people literally have pickup trucks full of food and toys. Obviously, we, you know, we deploy a couple of guys to help pick this stuff up, and I can't thank the town, the town folk enough, but, you know, there's obviously little delays here and there, but we want to try to minimize it as much as possible, so that's why we want to incorporate the second day, so we don't have to worry about the stops delaying the actual parade. So that's what we're looking to do this year.
So just to recap, the dates are, can you restate the dates and the timeframes again? That's okay?
I'm sorry. So December 3rd is a Saturday. Those are the days that we're going to do the stops, and the two stops are 11:00 AM to 11:45 AM at the Shawshin Elementary School, 1:00 PM to 1:45 PM at the North Intermediate School. Sunday, December 7th is when we're going to, I'm sorry, December 4th, we're going to have our parade, and that will start off at nine o'clock, and we hope to be done around between 4:00 and 5:00 PM.
Okay. And then the, the streets and the times that you anticipate where you're going to be, that will be published on your website?
That's correct, and we actually have a resident that's offering to try to do a, like a, like an app thing, which you can actually follow Santa Claus.
Oh, great.
That's not set in stone yet, but we are planning on doing that. And I did miss out one thing, Sunday, December 4th, we will be, as part of it, and this time will be posted, we will be driving through Town Hall again. Last year, we had a couple of residents come up and request that we do a silent run through a particular area, and we found Town Hall to be the best, because we do have a lot of kids in town who may be audio-sensitive, artistic, or something of that nature, where the sounds of the siren, they want to enjoy it, but the sounds of the sirens, you know, actually bother them. So we are going to incorporate that again this year, where we will be coming to the Town Hall and just doing a quiet drive-through, which means the whole parade will go through, no music, no siren, so that way everyone can enjoy the, the parade. So it was a big success last year, we got a lot of thanks for that, so.
Wonderful. So just one question that I have, and I don't want to be like the, the one person with the question, but in terms of the Shawshin in the north, I know winter is basketball season, do you know if the stop and, you know, traffic and parking may have an impact on the youth basketball that goes on in that gym?
So we looked at the north, the north, and typical in years past, when they do have basketball, they have used that side parking lot, which is, I guess, adjacent to Ballavale Street.
Okay.
Yeah, Ballavale Street, but the cut, the cut through, the bus turnaround, as I guess you would say.
Is fine, okay.
Is typically fine. As far as the Shawshin, there is a huge, right down the middle, there is a, there is a huge section of the parking lot that's not marked up for parking.
Okay.
And one of the things that we have done years in the past, because we have run into the situation with basketball, was typically the night before, we'll go out and we'll just make sure that certain areas are coned off, it's still provide enough parking for the people, but also gives us enough room so we don't have to worry about a traffic situation.
Perfect, okay.
Just, I guess, to that point, it may be just worth, if you haven't already, reaching out to Brett Sowen, just so he can let his coaches and perhaps send the word out to the parents that on that particular day, they, they just be aware that this is happening, you know?
Absolutely, yeah, we can do that, it's no problem.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I'm seeing you, you're given 45 minutes for each stop.
Correct.
Do you believe that that's going to be enough time? I know you get crowds.
Correct. Well, the reason why that we put a gap between 11:00, both schools, was, if necessary, to give a buffer zone, so that way we're not trying to rush down to the next school. So that was kind of anticipated. Nothing we really wanted to broadcast, because we want to try to prevent the people from showing up at 11:44 with 12 kids saying, "Hey, here we go," but that was one of the reasons why we had that buffer zone, was because it would give us a safe travel from one end of the town to the other, and it would also make sure that we had some room in case people did show up late.
And on the separate day, it, it prevents the, you know, the delays from adding up too much on the actual parade, so.
Great, anything I have to remember?
Yeah, thank you both for being here, this presentation, it's just, it's an awesome event, and it just seems to get better every year. I love the idea of just trying to reach out to other kids who may not have been able to be involved in the past, I just think that's awesome that you're able to do that for some kids, and I would encourage people to reach out. You are soliciting for people, right? You don't have five already, but you're hoping to get five families?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have a couple, but we're definitely open for more. For people that don't have Facebook, if they want to call the police station, just ask Officer Ferbush, ask for Traffic and Safety Office, just ask for my name, they can leave a message on my, on my voicemail, and I can easily reach out to them if they don't have Facebook, we can, we can make it work either way, so.
I think it's awesome, and I encourage people to do that, and we look forward to it, I hope there's great weather, really appreciate all the volunteers. It's such a great moment for little kids, I know my, my little girls loved it last year and years past, and even though I think Dan sped up when he saw me, but really, I hope it's another successful year, and I know it will be, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, seventh one, huh? Boy, time flies, but you're having fun at it, too. That's a good thing. Really, you guys should be commended for what you're doing, bringing the community together once again, just, just a wonderful event that you're doing. The, when you, on the fourth, when you're driving by, that's, there's no stops on that, it's just a.
Correct, there's no scheduled stops, obviously, if, you know, like I said, this town blows me away every year with the generosity, and we'll go down to a neighborhood and people will empty out their pantry just to donate food for others in this town, you know, and we've, we've arranged it with the parade, the whole line of parade, where, you know, what we would, if necessary, we can have a truck break off to collect whatever necessary stuff, and then catch back up, so that way it minimizes the delay of the actual parade. But as far as actual stops, no, there will be none.
It's just great, I mean, I, I'm on Woburn Street, and I enjoy when you guys come driving by, so I, I run out there, too, so, me and my dog. But thank you for what you do.
So it's all been said, but I want to thank you both as well. I know, you know, everything that you're doing, just to provide public safety and be a leader in the town as our chief, and for yourself, just working through the myriad of different issues that we have, and it seems like, you know, there's always a traffic concern, and to do this above and beyond just your regular call of duty and to give back to the community, it's something that you don't have to do, it's something that you're choosing to do, and that isn't lost on me, as I know it isn't lost on many others. So it's been said the seventh year, and it just keeps getting better, and I know some of the people that work with you from ANS Towing, they absolutely love it, and they look forward to it every year, and it's, has to give you a sense of pride and a feel-good to be able to give back to the community, so I appreciate your willingness to take this on year after year and do it collectively as a team, the two of you and the rest of your department and everyone else involved. So with that being said, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to grant the request as presented by the chief, as well as Officer Ferbush at this time.
So moved.
Motion's been made, motion's seconded, any discussion hearing, none? All those in favor, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, we can move on to communications, please?
Yes, under communications, the first item on the agenda is the certification of free cash. As we recall, part of the timing of the special town meeting was done so that we would have our notice of free cash prior to the special town meeting, thanks to the effort of Brian Perry, our town accountant, finance director, and his staff in pulling all the information together, also the treasure collector's office, there's a tremendous amount of information, the assessor's office, they're all involved in closing out the fiscal year '22 and getting the information off to the Department of Revenue. As a consequence, we were informed last week that the town's free cash balance for July 1, 2022 is $39,239,630. Separately, in the town's sewer enterprise fund, there's a balance of $280,000. Uh, separately, in the town's sewer enterprise fund, there's a balance of $280,696. So, uh, certainly, uh, in my estimation, good news, because, uh, with the projects we have coming up, obviously two that are slated for consideration at the meeting on Saturday, uh, we have a school project that is being worked on by many people, both, uh, on the town, town general government side, as well as the school department, and multiple other projects, uh, on the horizon, uh, fire substation and others. This, um, uh, this free cash balance will assist with those projects, um, recognizing that in addition, uh, there will be borrowing associated with that. That was, uh, first, separately, uh, but connected, is, uh, a letter from, a memo from, uh, Brian Perry, just again, noting, uh, the free cash, uh, balance, uh, essentially, uh, noting it is, represents unrestricted available funds that may be used as a funding source for appropriation, uh, to appropriate free cash, the balance must be positive, and the amount must be certified by the Department of Revenue, and he also notes the importance of having these funds for the various purposes of capital projects. Following up on that is, is a email, uh, from, uh, Mike Muller, the Executive Director of, um, Community Rail, um, MBTA, uh, and he advises us that the, uh, they did receive, uh, they being the MBTA, uh, received approval from the, uh, Federal Transit Authority for the, uh, commuter rail, um, loading area, uh, that they are, uh, stationed, that they were, uh, pursuing, uh, this has been, as you know, a multi-year effort, uh, the Board of Selectmen have, um, been intimately involved, as well as our legislative delegation, in pursuing this. Uh, now that the FTA has, um, granted, uh, the authority, uh, to pursue, uh, go forward on this, uh, the, uh, MBTA will further develop the design, it's expected that we'll, uh, receive updates on that design, and then, uh, as the ball moves forward, and, uh, I would hope that, uh, at some point in the next several months, uh, the work can be, uh, put out to bid and, and we'll actually see some impact. Uh, next is, uh, communication from Kelly Maggie Wright, who is representative from the Minuteman Senior Services, uh, group, uh, intimately involved with, uh, our elderly services department, and, uh, we receive an update every year about the work they do, uh, they file a report which represents, uh, service and statistics of service that were conducted during fiscal '22. Uh, she notes that they offer over 20 programs to communities throughout their network, uh, specifically 1,148 residents of Wilmington, uh, received services during this period. Uh, they include, uh, case management in-house, and in-house care, caregiver support, uh, investigating, uh, reports of abuse, uh, visiting nurse, uh, nursing homes, uh, to provide advocacy, and assisting with, uh, any issues that may arise there, and providing information about health insurance and prescription drug options. So those, those are just some of the services that they provide. Uh, we also have, uh, communication from Eric Hockey, who is the attorney representing, uh, the Wilmington-Wooburn Intermodal. Uh, as you know, for a number of years now, uh, due to the decision of the Surface Transportation Board, uh, both the town and, uh, Wilmington-Wooburn Intermodal, uh, have been required to provide updates, uh, to the STB, uh, every 90 days. Uh, this most recent update, uh, really just kind of recaps what has been, uh, an ongoing situation here. I think at this point, uh, the, uh, both parties, uh, the town and, uh, WWI are waiting, uh, for the consent agreement to be, uh, ironed out between Olin and EPA, uh, so we're in a bit of a holding pattern. One of the requests that, uh, Mr. Hockey makes is that, uh, there be an allowance to, um, put on hold any further updates pending, uh, consent agreement. Similarly, a, uh, an update from Dan Deutsch, uh, Esquire, who is the town's special counsel, uh, provides essentially the same information, uh, just noting that, uh, the last time, uh, there were meetings between, uh, the town and, uh, Wilmington-Wooburn Intermodal was September of '21, uh, some of the issues that the town had raised concern about at the time, uh, included wetlands, uh, fire access, the implications of construction activities during remediation, but again, we're kind of in a holding pattern at this point. Uh, next communication comes from Verdantis, uh, which is formerly, uh, Geo Insight, they are the town's environmental consultant, and they're providing, uh, an update on, uh, various activities that have, uh, taken place with EPA. They cite, uh, multiple documents that they reviewed, uh, that came from, uh, EPA or from Olin and have been updated to their, um, their website. Documents include Olin's treatability study, a data gap work plan, EPA's response to the Jewel Drive Dapple, uh, extraction, uh, system. Each time there's a document that is issued, uh, by Olin to EPA or Olin, uh, in response, these documents are reviewed by Verdantis. Uh, in some cases, there are responses or questions raised, suggestions made, uh, these most recent documents did not require that. Uh, they noted that in September, they participated in a remote meeting with EPA staff and members of the group work and, and town officials. Uh, and then separately, uh, again, another memo from Verdantis, uh, with regard to essentially, uh, Cliff Notes, if you will, of a September 21st, uh, virtual meeting, remote meeting, uh, that took place, uh, hosted by EPA, but, uh, town staff, uh, work, and also Verdantis, uh, participated, uh, and, uh, these meetings are, are scheduled on a regular basis with EPA, uh, to update, uh, all parties on the work that's being done. Uh, one of the things that was talked about included this community involvement plan, some of you may recall, uh, over the last year, uh, different, uh, representatives from EPA have reached out to town officials and others, uh, seeking comment on, um, how EPA can be more responsive in terms of providing timely information. Uh, that plan is, um, in a draft form and is expected to be, uh, issued shortly for comment. Uh, they also, again, refer to the treatability study that was talked about earlier, that is, um, uh, Olin has been directed to, uh, treat and remove the dense aqueous phase liquids from, uh, the aquifer, and Olin has until February 17th of 2023 to submit a final report on that. Uh, and also, one of the topics of discussion has been, uh, uh, Olin's, uh, efforts through their consultant to seek access to the Maple Meadow Brook wetlands to do some, uh, groundwater sampling. It's been a bit of a challenge because of the environmental conditions, but that's, uh, an ongoing issue.
Thank you for that. So the first board to consider item, we did take up already regarding the Santa Parade, so moving on to board to consider item number seven.
Yes, this next one is, um, a ratification to the town manager's appointment, uh, to the Disabilities Commission of David, uh, Jovanado, uh, he is, uh, interested in serving on the, um, commission. Uh, we have three vacancies, and, uh, I had, uh, appointed him, and this is subject to ratification of the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, unanimous, thank you.
Uh, separately, we have, uh, a second appointment that I've made to the Disabilities Commission, Roberta Miskin, uh, again, uh, in her case, uh, her term would expire April 30th, 2025. I should note that, uh, the previous appointment would expire, uh, on April 30th, 2024, uh, but in this case, this would fill a second vacancy.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, unanimous, thank you.
Uh, we have a request from Jennifer Bilonas, uh, from the Where One Wilmington. Uh, again, this has been a tradition now for a number of years, but the group, as you know, uh, has a very successful event, uh, the, um, tree, um, uh, tree lighting, um, not, not the tree lighting, the...
Festival Trees.
Festival of Trees, I'm sorry, Festival of Trees over at St. Thomas, and they're asking to, uh, place lights, uh, place signs, rather, on the town common.
So moved.
Motion's been made, do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, unanimous, thank you.
And then the final one is just with regard to the January Board of Selectmen's, uh, schedule, uh, the schedule for that month is January 9th and January 23rd are the typical meetings, the 2nd and 4th. Monday, uh, also recommending that the, uh, board meet on the 30th, specifically for the purpose of the budget presentation, which, um, for many years, hasn't been exclusively, but most years, uh, there's one specific meeting just for the purpose of the budget presentation.
And so with that, would you be looking for that to start at six o'clock or seven o'clock?
Uh, I think it's, uh, really up to the board, I certainly could do either.
What's the board's pleasure, does the 30th work for everybody? I know Lilia is not here, but should we keep it at the seven like we normally do?
Uh, yeah, I would sug- suggest keeping it at the seven.
Consistent, consistent. Okay, so...
Low has a problem.
Yeah, so that being the case, I would like to just get a motion from the board, um, to approve the January 9th, January 23rd, and January 30th date.
Removed.
Motion's been made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, unanimous, thank you. Public comments. Yes, sir, if you can just please stand and identify your name and your address for the record.
Anthony Noel at Park Street.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, Chairperson McConnell, to you, I'd like to, um, call the members individually, relative to the upcoming, um, special town meeting on Saturday. I have two questions, easy questions.
Sure.
Um, first question is, uh, are you in favor or opposed to the construction of the new Town Hall? Starting with Mr. Calriss, that would be...
I'm in favor.
You're in favor?
Yes.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm opposed.
And the second question is, are you in favor or opposed to the construction of the new senior center?
I am in favor, I wish it were in a different location, but I am in favor of the construction of a new senior center.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Okay. The reason why I'm here is I feel as though that the new town should be considering, um, senior housing, to upgrade the, uh, deming way, rather than having the new Town Hall or a senior center, I think that's what we need first.
Understood, certainly appreciate your comment.
That's all I have to say.
Well, thank you for being here, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I see that there are no other, uh, public comments, does anyone have any announcements? Yes?
Thank you very much, just, uh, you beat me to it, uh, but I, I just wanted to remind everybody, I mentioned this a few months back when we first, uh, voted to have the special town meeting, is that, uh, we, my wife and I will be attending a wedding out of state, so I will be there for the special town meeting, but if I excuse myself early, uh, that's why, uh, you'll see me exit. But, uh, as I mentioned, I am in favor of both articles, and, uh, I look forward to seeing everybody there on Saturday morning, so thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay? Thank you. Any new business? Hearing none, important dates?
Important dates, uh, start November 14th to the 18th is the next curbside collection of yard waste. Uh, we have, uh, a, uh, November 16th, a brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 19th, of course, is a special town meeting, uh, Wilmington High School, Joanne M. Benton Auditorium, 9:00 AM. Uh, I would note that, uh, check-in starts at 7:30, and certainly people are encouraged to, uh, come in early. Uh, November 19th is a brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Uh, November 21st, the Wildwood School Building Committee, uh, 6:00 PM, will be virtual. Uh, November 23rd is a brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Again, uh, brush drop off on the 26th, uh, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. November 24th is Thanksgiving Day, town offices closed. Also, town offices will be closed on November 25th. Uh, Board of Selectmen meet again on November 28th, Room 9, 7:00 PM. Also on the 28th of November is a discussion of local property tax policy with reference to classification for fiscal '23, uh, Board of Selectmen meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. Uh, November 28th through December 2nd, Curbside Collection of Yard Waste. November 29th is, uh, Wildwood School Building Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 PM. November 30th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Uh, November, uh, December 2nd, Festival of Trees, Villanova Hall, uh, Middlesex Ave, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. December 3rd, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. December 3rd, the Christmas Tree Lighting Town Common, 4:00 PM. Uh, December 3rd, again, the Festival of Trees, Villanova Hall, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Uh, and then also on December 4th, Festival of Trees, Villanova Hall, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. December 4th is the Holiday Social, Harndon Tavern, 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Uh, December 5th through the 9th, Curbside Collection of Yard Waste, and the Board of Selectmen will be meeting for their, uh, sole meeting in December on the 12th, uh, Room 9, 7:00 PM.
Thank you, at this time, I'd turn it over to you.
Just, um, on the Festival of Trees, just for the public be aware, it may not be at the Villanova Hall, uh, only because it's, the Villanova Hall has been shut down for quite some time, uh, due to mold issues, so I don't know where the Festival of Trees is going to be held, because no one is allowed to have any events or any, is not allowed to go into Villanova Hall. Is it at the KFC? So just for the public to be aware, to, just to watch their website, or whatever their, you know, if it's on cable or, or, uh, in the town crier.
Okay.
As to where it's going to be held. I, I think it might be at the Knights of Columbus, I'm not sure.
All right, we'll check that out.
Okay, so, um, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Selectman Bendel for a salute to service, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, in preparation for this, as people know, we honor a veteran at, uh, each one of our meetings, and salute them for their service, and in preparation for today's meeting, uh, we were kind of tossing ideas back and forth, and we got a great suggestion from, uh, our Chair, Judy O'Connell, who, uh, said that, you know, in honor of Veterans Day, we ought to just salute all veterans, and so I think, we didn't want to single anybody out tonight, uh, because of Veterans Day being just a few days ago, so we honor all veterans, and I reminded of the famous saying that I just love so much, "We may not have known them all, but we owe them all." And so I think that was timely, and, uh, we, we thank, we certainly, on behalf of this board and our town, thank all veterans everywhere, and we salute them, thank you.
Thank you for that. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion's been made, do I have a second? All those in favor, unanimous, good night, thank you.
I would just ask, uh, board members, uh, to meet in my office briefly to sign some documents.[1775.23]